Good evening, I would like to call the General Committee meeting to order. Would everyone please rise for the prayer and a pledge of allegiance?
Dear Heavenly Father, we welcome the opportunity to gather together this evening and to discuss the business of our school district. As we begin the second semester of the school year, we ask that you give us the energy and determination to provide the best of teaching environments for our children. Guide us in our efforts to have them finish the year as proficient students who will remember this year as one of learning and accomplishments. Be with each person in each of our classrooms and give to them a sense of peace that we are prepared and ready to meet any academic challenges that come our way. These things we ask in your name.
Mr. Long, would you lead us in the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please, Ms. Votchay.
Mrs. Acevedo?
Here.
Mr. Campbell?
Here.
Dr. Kraft is ill tonight. Mrs. Stefada?
Here.
Mr. Egan?
Here.
Mr. England?
Here.
Mrs. Dicer?
Here.
Dr. Lewis?
Here.
Mr. Long?
Here.
Mr. Nikosian?
Here.
Mr. Warner?
Here.
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Votchay. Before we go on to the first item of the agenda, since this is the first General Committee meeting for the new year, we'd like to wish everyone a very happy, healthy new year on behalf of the board. And at this time, I would call on Dr. Lewis, he has some special guests with us tonight.
Thank you, Ms. Dicser. At this time, I'd like to introduce some of the employees from East Feliciano Public Schools. For the last eighteen months, you all know I've been serving as superintendent in East Feliciano. And we are attending a Common Core workshop in New Orleans today and tomorrow, and so they came down for the board meeting tonight. And I'd like to take this opportunity to introduce many of my team members that are here. Dr. Roddy, who's in our curriculum department. We have Mr. Lovell, who is one of our literacy integration specialists at one of our elementary schools. Ms. Ella Filson, she is the principal of our alternative school. Ms. Kelly, she is assistant principal of one of our schools. Ms. Thomas, she is one of our directors in the district. And Ms. Montgomery is the principal of the high school. And we have Mr. Brooks in the back, he is also a member of the curriculum team at Central Office. And we have my beautiful little girl, Taylor Lewis, who is a sixth grader at Andrew Jackson.
Well, we claim her.
Thank you, Dr. Lewis, and welcome, Taylor Lewis, and one of our students, and to all of the East Feliciano coworkers with Dr. Lewis. Welcome to St. Fano Parish. We're so glad you were able to come to our meeting tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Dr. Lewis, first item's education.
Yes, thank you. Item four on the agenda this evening is the teacher in-service activities. And we have...
Hello.
Good evening.
Good evening. Mary Lametta and I will ask to speak to you about the in-service coming up next Tuesday on January 21st. It were item number four. But before I start, I want to thank Margot Dubar and Allison Groh, who are very tech savvy, who had a Google site that they were able to navigate so well, my being a technical dinosaur, a technology dinosaur. They were really very helpful with this. And I can't take all the credit for this because we patterned what we did after what the high school and middle school did for their first in-service this year, and we hopped on the bandwagon for this time, okay? And what we did was we started off with surveying the teachers with about eighteen to twenty choices of what they would like to attend at this in-service. After we got the initial results, we narrowed it down to nine or ten choices, and the teachers were able to select two in-services that they would like to attend. So what we did, I went personally to teachers who did these particular items well, and they met twice, once last week and once again this week, coordinating how they're going to plan this agenda for our in-service next week. And we're hoping it's very successful because what's going to happen is the teachers are going to walk in and they're going to have a paper that's going to tell them which in-service they're assigned to for that particular whole day, okay? If you look at the first page that I gave you for elementary school, the topics, and I'll very briefly describe my topics here. The first one was on time management, so we chose teachers who did that well. Behavior management and student engagement together, how do you stop discipline problems by engaging your kids. K through two intervention strategies, which included Project Read, Building Fluency Guided Reading, comprehension strategies, hand-in-hand with close reading, questioning using talk moves, writing, creating reading tasks using the language of the standards, strategies and tips to get your students to attain an advanced in math, and combining math routines with Common Core centers. If you look at the next page, when each teacher walks in, she's going to receive this, one of these papers with her name at the top, notice I don't have anybody's name on top. This particular teacher chose writing, if you look at session four, there's four sessions, writing, and using talk moves, questioning using talk moves. So she was going to session one and four. Now you notice in the middle, it's called Active Tables and Active Tables and Grade Level Meeting. What that is, is everybody's going to those two sessions. The school board recently purchased five active tables for each elementary school, which is an active Promethean table, where if the teacher's doing a lesson at the board, the kids can actually do it on the Promethean tables, okay? And what we did with that is, since we have them now in the schools, we want the teachers to know how to use them. So we have the gentlemen coming from Active Tables to give a presentation, that's the Active Table session. And the second session, they will actually go into Shellman Elementary's Active Table lab to play with them for a half hour, and then switch, like if K and one goes together, kindergarten's going to go play with the Active Tables, and first grade's going to have a grade level meeting with a curriculum that I have one of my reading coaches facilitating a specific agenda for the grade level meeting on things that they need. And then they'll flip-flop, okay? But everyone has two sessions that they could sign up for. So we're hoping this works well. We've never given teachers choices like this, it's always been, okay, you come to this session, but this is something we're trying differently this year, and hopefully it works well. And Ms. Lametta's going to show you about middle and high school.
Good evening. And just to follow up, as Ms. Halton said, really we found out with the teachers, we're trying to do with them as we're asking them to do with their students, and differentiate for the teachers as well, because we do have a mix of veteran teachers and new teachers, and teachers of varying abilities with the new things that we're asking them to do, whether it be a deeper understanding of Common Core, using the Springboard books, using Socratic Seminar, classroom management. So we felt like if we were able to give them a mix of things that they and their principal or administrator can choose based on walkthrough data or their own personal needs, it would help that day be more meaningful and purposeful for them. So that's what we're shooting for. So I'd like to thank Margot too, because she also helped logistically organize it, but I really want to also thank the teachers, coaches, and facilitators who are presenting for us, because without them stepping up and being presenters, we couldn't offer this type of choice. So in the past, we did have to offer more block-style big sessions just because there's not as many presenters. So we did survey the teachers and looked at what they were experts in and what they could offer and present. And we did it in our last in-service, and it went really well, we had a lot of positive feedback, the teachers really felt like it made it a very productive day. So for that reason, we're following up. So we're not really putting much new in, we're just continuing the things that we've done throughout the year with the deeper understanding of Common Core, we're trying to help them with Socratic Seminar, reading, writing, discussing. I did want to just kind of run you through the handouts and highlight a couple of things on these. The first set, basically, the white copy, is the explanation of our sessions, and I just wanted to basically call your attention to the third page. We're really excited that... Did you have another set of... Yeah, with the blue writing? On the third page on the top, we were able to bring in a presenter, he's a professor at Penn State, Dr. Paul Ricamini. He's a specialist in special ed in math, and he's fantastic at math from middle school through high school, he really can teach the higher maths as well. And he specializes in really making the math accessible to students. He's going to teach the teachers three direct succinct strategies that they can apply to their teaching. And one interesting strategy that I just want to highlight for you is called chunking across problems, where typically people can remember three things in short-term memory, hold them in their short-term memory, some can remember five, some can remember seven, but most can remember three. So if you're teaching students multi-step problems as you hit middle and high school, it's hard for them to follow you because it's so many steps. So he teaches how to chunk across and do four problems and just show the first two steps on four, and then have the students do three problems, just the first two steps, then move in the next two steps, and really gain their confidence throughout the problem instead of showing three complete problems and saying, now do these three. So there's really been some good success in regular and special ed students with strategies like that. He's also going to help them learn how to accommodate homework and classwork to meet all levels of learners in the room. And as y'all know, we have our special ed students included, so really regular ed teachers reach many more students than special ed teachers do. So this will help the regular ed teachers learn how to accommodate what they're doing for not just the special ed students in their classroom, but as we go to Common Core, even our regular ed students are sometimes struggling with the rigor. So it's really going to help make the math content more accessible. So we're going to mix the middle and high in a session in the morning and teach them those strategies, and then have them come back in the afternoon and bring their Springboard lesson for the next week. And while he's there, help them apply that to what they're about to teach that very next week, to really help them bring it right into the classroom the very next week. We're really trying to find a way to help the teachers utilize it right away in their lessons. So that's exciting for me because I went to his training, it was really good, so I really found that useful. And then the second part of that block is our Math Design Collaborative, which is something that we're doing along with the LDC, and that's really based on formative assessment data in the classroom for math teachers, to really help them gain data as they're teaching, not just our benchmark data or our data that we give on unit tests, but as they teach and as they question, and as the students discuss, to help them activate prior knowledge and help the students realize how much they really do know, and then help the teachers gauge and find evidence if the students are understanding what the teachers are really teaching. So that's just another level of through classroom discussion and questioning that they can really help the students gain better understanding of the deeper math that they're having to use in Common Core. So we're really excited about these two sessions for our math teachers. So I explained that to say, then you'll see the bottom part of page three that has required content-specific sessions. So like Ms. Harleton, we gave some choice, but some content areas we gave required sessions to based on the presenters and the topics that we're dealing with. So that's the white packet that basically shows the presenters and the topics. And then the salmon packet shows that across the day, we're able to offer four sessions, four-hour and fifteen-minute sessions, and we found if we offer four short sessions, it's much more effective, and people can really focus for those short periods of time, get their knowledge, and move on to another session. So we're doing four sessions across the day. And then the last sheet is a sample of what the teachers get as their schedule, where it'll show you the handout the teachers will get, giving them the time periods of the day and then their schedule. Okay, and if y'all have any questions...
If you have any questions, it'd be the one of us.
Thank you, Ms. Lametta, Ms. Halton. Appreciate your presentation for this evening, and definitely wonderful that our teachers will have options, and then also the information you shared in reference to the special education training for our special education teachers as well as our regular ed teachers is wonderful, and I think that's definitely something that we need here in the district. So thank you all for your presentation. Board members, anyone? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Item five on the agenda is Legislative Shadowing Week for Food Services. Ms. Bloom, good evening.
Hello, good evening. Tonight, I'm coming to you to invite you to participate in Legislative Shadowing Week. It is an opportunity for you to come into our cafeterias, work with the ladies, serve, visit with the children. You can spend a day if you like, you could spend an hour, you could spend a little bit of time. So we really encourage you, you know, every year, our school system provides wonderful meals for our children. We provide breakfast, lunch, and snacks for after-school and enrichment programs. And every day, we provide forty-six hundred lunches on average a day in our school system. We provide about twenty-five hundred breakfasts. And also, school meals are very important to our children because, besides providing nutrition, they also help them with learning, and they help them with nutrition education, and hopefully they help them learn good practices so that in their lives, they can make good choices and have a healthy lifestyle. And that's what we're all about. So you realize that breakfast, our breakfast provides one-fourth of the recommended daily allowances that children eat every day. Our lunches provide a third of the RDA. So children are getting more than fifty percent of the nutrition they need when they eat breakfast at school and lunch at school every day. It's very important. And we'd love you to come and work with the ladies, are very excited to see you. In the packet I've given you, it gives you some information about the meals that we're serving that week, all of our menus. It also is giving you some information so that you can contact the cafeteria manager if you like, or you can call our office and let us know. You can come at any time, and that's fine, but we'd like to know when you want to come so we can be ready for you. And my ladies are very eager to have you working anyway. So, you know, really, you could come for breakfast if you like before work, or you can come for lunch, and that'll be fine. And I hope that you all enjoy, and I hope that you can participate. I think you'll have a good time, and the kids will love to see you there. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bloom. Ms. Long?
Ms. Bloom, I noticed you don't have the toms on here, do you? You know what time breakfast starts?
Every school has diff... Yeah, breakfast is going to start between seven and nine, and it depends on the school. So if you call and tell me what school you'd like to go to, I'll tell you. Every school has different lunchtimes. Some of our elementary schools have five lunches, and our high school has one lunch, and our middle schools have one lunch, so, and they all have different times because it accommodates the needs of the school, you know, the schedules and everything. So I'll be glad to share that with you.
Okay, great, thank you.
Any other board members? Thank you, Ms. Bloom. Oh, Ms. Dicser.
Thank you, Ms. Bloom.
You're welcome.
So we just need to call you and let you know what schools, and if we want to jump from one school to another, we can do that also.
Absolutely.
Throughout that whole week, correct?
Absolutely.
Okay.
It's fine, and you're always welcome at any time.
Okay.
But that'll be great.
Great, okay. Thank you. And you, Ms. Bloom, and all of the cafeteria technicians, you're doing an awesome job, you really do.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for all your work.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other board member? Thank you, Ms. Bloom. Item six on the agenda is Technology Readiness for Park Assessments. Mr. Brown, good evening.
Good evening. Good evening, and Happy New Year to y'all. This is our, time for our annual review of the technology plan. Usually we do this in January. We're asking that, at the next board meeting, that you approve the technology plan as it is written, that you approved last year with no changes, with the exception of the last page. I'm going to cover the last page with you in just a minute, but before I do that, I kind of want to give you some background information. I think it was Dr. Kraft last year that brought to our attention. Last couple of years, we've been making just minor petty little changes, what's the value of the document, so to speak? The driving force behind the technology plan is all driven behind, is all driven by E-Rate. E-Rate required a technology plan in order for you to apply for E-Rate funding. About two years ago, the rules changed, and they said, okay, you don't have to have a technology plan unless you're applying for Priority Two, which is a very small list of equipment and services that we don't qualify for because we don't have a high enough poverty rate. When E-Rate did that, the state stepped in and said, okay, we're going to create a new technology plan template. So year one came by, nothing happened. Last year came by, nothing happened. This year, during the summer, they convened a committee, I sat on the committee, we met three times, and they disbanded the committee and said, with the changes of Park, Park is changing so rapidly and evolving constantly, that they said they didn't want to put out a template yet because they were afraid that in two or three months, they may have to change and adjust the template. And so that's why we're asking you to do, for us to hold off another year for the state to come out with a template, in the hopes that they will come out with a template for next year. If not, we may do something in-house for the interim, because I think it's time, this plan will expire this year, it was good through 2014, and it's time for us to revisit our goals and strategies. But I don't want to convene a committee, as you can see from the plan itself, it's a large committee, it's a lot of work and an effort on a lot of people, if we're going to have to change it in the end. So that's why I wanted to let you know why I was bringing to you the same exact plan and not making any changes to it, okay? On the very last page is Appendix Number Six. And what I'm providing for you here is where we stand in terms of being Park-ready. We know that this is going to be online testing twice a year minimum for grades three through eight at this point in time. So this requires a lot of computers. In addition to that, they had come out with a set of standards that these computers had to meet. Windows Seven had to be the base operating system, had to have a minimum of three gigs. So our tech team went to work in the last two years, hats off to Lyle, Rob Bradford, and Matt Tucker, who made this happen, and within two years, got over three thousand machines Park-ready. What I provided for you on this handout is strictly the testable computers that are in computer labs. We did not include the classroom computers in the back of the room, because they're not ideal for testing, okay? So I'm only providing you with the testable computers in the computer labs. But they did do all three thousand machines, which does include the classroom computers. So it was a tremendous amount of work, and we're very happy that they were able to accomplish that for us. If you look at the first column of the chart, you have your schools, and then the next column gives you the population of testable students, because remember, in elementary school, that does not include kindergarten, first and second grade, it starts at third grade, okay? For the high school, it includes all four grades, at this point in time, we've chosen to include that. At this point, they're still struggling with what they're going to do park-wise for the high school level. The next column is the number of testing computers that meet the technology specifications as set forth by Park. In other words, the number of computers that we have in the labs at those schools that meet the specifications. And then you have, the third column says, the number of testing computers needed for the seven-to-one ratio, which was the minimum requirements that Park came out with. Park said, at minimum, you have to have at least a seven-to-one ratio for every child, for every, excuse me, for every computer you have, it has to be able to service seven children, okay? So it tells you there how many computers we would need based on that population at each school. Then the next column says additional computers that would be needed to meet that seven-to-one ratio, and in this case, zeros are good. So as you look down that column, you can see all of our schools meet the seven-to-one ratio. The next column tells you the number of computers that we need to make the five-to-one ratio, which is the recommended number of computers per stu... or the number of students per testing computer. As you can see, the list here tells you how many computers are needed, and then again, additional computers that we would need in order to meet that requirement, and again, zeros are good. So at this point in time, if the population doesn't drastically change, and if Park doesn't change their specifications, we will meet the Park readiness standards for the five-to-one ratio.
Talk a little bit about the bandwidth.
Okay. We also went out for RFP last year for our Cox Communication Internet Access Telephone Service. And at that time, we chose to, began making steps forward to improve our bandwidth structure by increasing the amount of bandwidth that was allocated to each school site. Now ideally, what the state and Park wants everybody to be at is a one-to-one ratio, but we're not quite there yet, and neither is the state, not even near that point. But we began to make some steps, and what we did was, we increased the bandwidth at every school by a factor of five. So all the elementary and middle schools have five hundred megs, and at the high school, we have one gig. Part of the tech, the survey that we have to complete so that the state can give you a footprint of where you stand for the Park readiness, this year they included a bandwidth survey. So George and I sat down, filled in the chart, answered all the questions, how much bandwidth is at each location, and how many students, and so on and so forth. Based on the input that we put into the survey, the response came back that all of our schools will be bandwidth-ready for the seven-to-one ratio, one hundred percent. All of our schools are a hundred percent ready for the five-to-one ratio, and we are a hundred percent ready for a three-to-one ratio, and just shy of being ready bandwidth-wise for a one-to-one ratio. So bandwidth, computers are the main factor we need, but we also need bandwidth because these tests will be bandwidth consumers. And so at this point, we feel confident that what we did by increasing our bandwidth with Cox this past go-around in the RFP has definitely served us well according to the survey that the state has put out for us. So we feel pretty confident at this point that we are test, we are test-ready, and we will know in March.
Talk a little bit about the pilot and the field testing.
Sure. We're going to be field-testing the Park assessments at, I think, maybe eight of our school sites, various components, because again, there are two main, two main tests. One is a performance-based test, and one is the end-of-the-year test. And there's also, there's some, at the beginning of the school year, there's some diagnostic tests, I don't know that we'll get involved with that, we may. So they've chosen to break down this Park pilot for our schools. Some of our schools will be taking the performance-based assessment, some of our schools will be taking the end-of-the-year assessment, and some of our schools will be doing both. And there's a two-time, there's two open windows. March eighth to April 11th will be the performance-based assessment, and those schools that will be involved with the field testing of the performance-based assessment will begin testing, Park testing during that timeframe. That window will close, and then in May, they will open up, on May 5th, they will open up the window for the end-of-the-year test and close that window on June 6th. So for those schools that are involved in the end-of-the-year test, will be taking the end-of-the-year test during that time. So we will have an opportunity this school year to pilot the test before we actually go full-blown in the next school year.
And in addition to that, too, what the state is supposed to be doing this fall is to run a simulation in the fall as if all of the students then would be actually testing on the computers themselves to determine if the districts have the capacity to actually do it. So we're hope, we're very hopeful with the work that we've done over the past couple of years that we're going to be, you know, we're going to be ready for the online testing for the Park assessments thirty through eight. Now, what the state is also proposing for the third and fourth grade students for the first year is that, if you so choose, you can have them still take it paper and pencil with five through eight being mandated unless you can show that for one year, you're not ready for it, and then you can get an exemption to do the five through eight. And on the flip side, they're recommending pencil and paper testing for third and fourth grade, but if you feel you would like your students to take them online and you feel you're ready, then you can go ahead and do online as well. This is going to be next spring for the 2015 first Park assessment. So there's been a lot of preparation, you know, as you can see in third through eighth grade, like Conrad has said, these, these computer numbers represent only those that are in our labs, and we've excluded the ones that are used every day in the classrooms because obviously those would not be ones that we'd want to try to monitor testing with. So I think we've, we feel that we've done everything that we possibly can to become ready, and if it were taken today, we're confident that we're as ready as anybody can be from a technological standpoint.
Ms. Long?
Ms. Votchay, I know this is a long-term plan, will we, will the administration be coming to us to purchase computers?
These are already in place. These are already done.
So from this point on, we're going to maintain and replenish, and look to see, you know, sometimes when we're adding more labs, for example, we had to go into Trist and add a lab, finding a classroom to convert into an additional lab is, is difficult at some of the sites. In the new schools, it's fine, because we, as we built the new schools, we made those accommodations. So we've been preparing for this for several years, so all of these are currently in place, already done.
Okay, and what is the life expectancy of, of computers? Do they have to be replaced every so many years?
Well, depends on who you talk to and what we're going to use them for. The platform that they're recommending, which is, every one of these meets that. We added some additional memory and some additional, and you can talk more from a technological standpoint. So some of the older machines, we were able to modify and upgrade to meet the minimum platform, but in other places, we had to totally replace them, and it was time. So life expectancy, it really just depends on the usage at, for each, for example, at the high school, you're going to have a, an enhanced usage with the types of software, the types of courses that we offer. So you need more powerful, I guess, if you want to look at it that way, hardware.
And I'm very proud to say that, through the forward-thinking of the administration, we bought very, very few computers in order to be ready for this. I think the total was 120, and those are the brand-new labs that we had to put in because of the populations at those schools. But to answer your question, we have a, a software product called Deep Freeze that we put on our computers in the classrooms and the computer lab. And what this software package does, when you first load a machine, Deep Freeze, when you first load a machine, before you bring it out to a classroom, you load this software package on it, and it takes a snapshot of what's on the machine, all your settings, all your software packages. Kid comes in, class, adds, adds something to the desktop, changes the desktop, downloads something. At nine o'clock, the computers are set to shut down. When they shut down and come back on, they go back to that snapshot view automatically. So that saves a lot of added garbage to the machines, and it also helps us with virus protection. It's not 100 percent foolproof, but it does assist us with that. So to answer your question, we have machines that we're using in schools like St. Bernard, Smith, since they were built right after Katrina. The problem comes in down the road, like, as with our teacher laptops, we're starting to replace those now. The problem's not so much that the machines themselves don't function, is that technology has outgrown the machines. They don't have enough memory anymore, the processor speeds are so slow compared to when you sit on a new desktop. You sit on a new desktop, you're whizzing. You sit on your laptop, that still works, you're waiting and waiting. So the problem is keeping up with the technology. As the technology advances, we have to kind of find a middle ground between what we can afford, and, okay, if you have to wait a second, is it really that crucial? But then when you have to wait five, and 10, and 15, then it's time for us to say, you know, we need to do something.
And it's not likely we'll get any help from the state to purchase computers.
Not monetary.
Not from a monetary. The, the mantra is, well, let us help you figure out what can you do with your existing funds to be able to fund this. And, you know, it's laughable, because then you go back to, we already know how to manage our existing funds. Because if you going, if you're going to divert money to this, you're obviously taking away from something else. So we do an, we all do an analysis each year, is what's working, what's not, what are our priorities, what do we intend to fund, and what we can. And if this becomes a priority, then we've got to look at some other things that have to just fall by the wayside, that may not be quite as productive. When Conrad was talking about the, the Deep Freeze and such, what we've gotten to the point, we, we, we image each computer when we buy them. We, we have a set of software and, at each particular level, elementary, middle, and high. And why don't you explain a little bit about how it works technologically? When Lyle, when our tech crew goes in and sets up a new computer, and what the software looks like, how we get it on there, and then the Deep Freeze keeps it in that.
Sure. When we buy a new model, like this year, the laptops we've bought for teachers is a new model, because they discontinued the previous models we were using. So the 50, 5530, I think it is, is the model we're, we're rolling out right now. Lyle will sit down with the first model that we get, and he loads, manually loads, all of the software that we use in the district. So he manually loads Microsoft Office with Word, Excel, PowerPoint. He manually loads in with a disc, Active Inspire, which the teachers use with their Promethean boards, and any other software package that we use, he will manually load it in. He will configure all the settings, he will map it to go to whatever drives, network drives we need it to go to, and when he's got a perfectly clean image, then he sends it to our tech consultants, who will then play with it for a few days to make sure that he hasn't missed anything that the teachers are going to need. Because even though he's a wonderful tech person, he's not in the classroom. So they're sort of our catch-all in the backend, to make sure we haven't missed anything. Once that's done, and they've given us their approval, Lyle takes that hard drive out, and he puts it into a machine, and says, I want you to copy this. And he takes the hard drive out of 12 of them, 15, 10, whatever, shoves them into this machine, pushes the button, and it's like a recording. It sends that image to all of those hard drives. Then he takes the hard drives out, puts them back in the machines, and he goes to the classroom, he configures, he's, whatever little minor changes or whatever directions he has to point it in, does that, and then he says, okay, Deep Freeze, when I turn this off, when you come back on, I want you to freeze this computer. Turns it off, turns it on, it's frozen, he walks away. So we do that for every model. So in his workshop, he's got a hard drive of every model computer that we have across the district. There's about 12, 15 of them. And so whenever he's ready, whenever we need to do more, or we need to reimage, he just pulls that model, he pulls that hard drive off, does whatever changes we have to do, and he duplicates them. And in some cases, this year, he had enough leftover hard drives from machines that had gone dead for other reasons, that he was able to actually duplicate before he went to the school. So he duplicated 30 of them, went to 30 computers, pulled them out, put in the new ones, and took the old ones back to his shop. So there was no downtime for the teachers or the lab, because he had had it extras, enough just to shove them in, take out the old ones, he'd go back, reimage them, come back and do 30 more at a time.
That's great, that's great. As usual, our administration is staying ahead of things.
Over the years, you find a few little tricks in how to make it better each time. Because when you first start, you know, for we older people, who've been around a long time, when you first started these initiatives, just like everyone else, you pull out your hair with, you know, kids putting things on they shouldn't, teachers, oh, I like this piece of whatever, and trying to add it on, and then messing up what we had. So we manage it more effectively. Now, the most pushback we'll have is with the high school, because of all the different types of software, they would want the programs and their different courses. So what we try to do is, we have that centralized committee where, if you want to use that particular software, we will take a look at it, okay it, and then make it available, whether it be through the server or on individual desktops, however it's going to operate more effectively. But it's somewhat of a controlled process. And so if you sneak and put it on, well, that night, it's gone. It's gone when you come back, so.
Okay. Thank you, thank you, appreciate it.
Mr. Isart.
Thank you, Mr. Brown, for your presentation. And our commendation goes to you, Lyle, and the tech team for getting 3,000 computers ready for the park assessments. That's awesome.
They will be excited when I tell them that you've acknowledged. Thank you.
Yes, they'll tell them thank you for them, for being so efficient. You mentioned about the pilot program for the park assessments. My question is to you is, as far as the testing goes next year, will the test, grade, grade level-wise be taken simultaneously? Have you got, have we gotten a schedule yet, as far as the park assessments?
That initially, right now, I think what we're being told, and Ms. Voce, you back me up, I, I think what we're being told right now, there's going to be a window that opens, and if you're at Davies Elementary, grades three through five, how you schedule that in is up to you, but you have to get everybody done within this timeframe. I think the test, what pulls down, when you sit at a computer, if you're a third grade, and you're a fourth grade, and you're a fifth grade, what determines that is your login, whatever login information they're going to give you. It's probably a code that they're going to put in, like we do with EOC. And when you put in that code, it knows that you're a third grader, and here's the test that you're supposed to have.
Like what he mentioned, we currently really do that with the high school, with end-of-course testing.
Correct.
When he said EOC, the end-of-course test, there's a window of time that all the kids have to take it. So if you're taking Algebra I, not every child in the state sits down at the same exact time and takes that end-of-course test online, on the same day and time. There is a window. And even, because you couldn't, if, if we have it at, say, Shawman High School, 450, 500 freshmen, we're going to all take Algebra I EOC, they certainly can't sit down and take it at the exact same time with everyone else there.
But, but there will be other people across the state accessing the system at the same time. We will, in fact, that is one of the concerns that we hold internally, is that you've got all of these kids across the state that are trying to access this test during the same window, because everybody across the state's going to have that same window of opportunity. So it really depends upon the testing company and their server capacity as to what goes on, on our end. So we can get prepared as much as we'd like to, but we can't always, and, we, we can anticipate, but we can't always say that we can fix what's going on on their end.
See, I think we're as ready as we know how to be. There's, there's some major concern across the country right now, is will those two consortiums, for example, Park and, and the other one, Smarter Balance, but will they be ready in terms of their platforms and how they're going to deliver it? So when kids across the country are taking these things, and we've heard rumblings that there are some issues possibly with the park assessments, not from the content part of the assessment, but the actual delivery online. So I guess we'll see.
Has the state identified that concern?
We, as, as some groups of superintendents have spoken about it with our state leadership, but I think there's just uncertainty with everyone right now.
And I know that we went through this with EOC. In the early beginnings of EOC, we had this very issue, where all of the kids were accessing that test at one time, and they did not have enough server capacity. But you're dealing with a third-party company. So the state's going to say, it's them, and then they go to them, and they, you know, they get upset with them, and then the next year, they'll, we're going to fix it, we're going to fix it. So that may very well be what happens, we'll, we'll see.
Okay. Well, thank you very much for that explanation. And, and again, our commendations go to you. We're not only ready for a seven-to-one ratio, but we're ready for a five-to-one ratio. And that was my question about asking the testing, whether or not it's going to be done simultaneously. So, and you said we'll be close to one-on, one-to-one, pretty soon.
Bandwidth.
Bandwidth, yes. So if that, that comes down the line, then we'll be ready as far as that area goes. But then, we are definitely ready for the five-to-one, which is above the recommendation by the state, right? So, good job. Thank you very much.
Any other board members? Motion on, yes.
Okay. I'll move that we accept the Long Age Educational Technology Plan as the 2014-15 plan, as-is.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Please vote your machines.
Mr. Warner?
That's okay. Motion passes 10-0.
Thank you. Good night.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm seven, I'll turn it back to Ms. Isart.
Thank you, Dr. Lewis. Next item, personnel changes for the month of January. Good evening, Mr. Granberry.
Good evening, good evening. A little, a little action.
Yes, we see that. Arthur Miller, I see he's retiring. Congratulations to him. We will miss him very much, and we appreciate all of his hard work and long-term with the St. Peter's system.
And I'd just like to echo that. Arthur has been, he's in our maintenance department, has been just an invaluable person for many, many, many years, and then during Katrina was with us every step of the way, stayed with us, and has done an incredible job. So he's a wonderful man, wonderful family man, and we're going to miss him, and we wish, wish him well in his retirement. He truly deserves it.
Are there any questions, comments?
We do have to have action on the back page.
We do need action on.
We have two leave of absences that need to be approved.
So I'd like to make a motion that we recommend to the full board.
Okay, there's a motion by, by Mr. Long, seconded by Dr. Lewis, to accept personnel changes. I had one question, Mr. Granberry. On the, we have an assistant principal that's requesting a medical leave, will we try to replace her at the time, or it'll be temporary?
Administrative decision, Ms. Voce.
We're going to look at some assistance, but we're not going to replace her per se.
Okay.
Okay.
But we will give the principal some assistance, right?
Just having a baby.
Yeah. Congratulations to her. Good. Okay. Anyone else before we vote? There be no other discussion, please cast your votes.
Motion passes 10-0.
Thank you, Mr. Granberry. Next item is an executive item, Mr. Long.
Thank you. Item A is a resolution setting the date, time, and place of our regular monthly meetings. And are you inhaling this, Ms. Voce, or?
Yes, as, as, I don't think we have to read this until the actual board meeting. But this is our standard resolution, our yearly resolution, designating dates, times, and places of our committee meetings and our actual regular board meetings. As we see, it's the second and fourth Tuesday of each month here at the School Board Office Building, and they'll begin at 6:00 PM. The exception is over the Easter holidays, Thanksgiving, and Christmas. And those meetings have been adjusted as per the resolution, which, if you recommend it to the full board, we'll read into the minutes at the regular board meeting.
Right, so we just need a motion to?
To pass it to the regular.
Motion by Mr. England, seconded by Mr. Thaddeus. Any further discussion? Okay, vote your machines.
Motion passes 10-0.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Long. Next item on the agenda, superintendent's recommendations.
Well, it's just, to pass on from this committee meeting, at the actual board meeting in two weeks, we will have a request for qualifications for the architect engineering fees for the paving of the Davies parking lot. Those are just the pieces that were, are failing after Katrina, where we did not do it all. And we're getting additional funds from FEMA to go back and pave those areas that are creating problems. And then, as far as board business goes, there'll be the election of officers for the 2014 calendar year, and with that, the signature resolutions that are necessary once the board elects its officers for the year.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Voce. Anyone else? Okay, is there a motion to adjourn? Motion by Mr. Campbell, is there a second? Second by Mr. Warner. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye. Aye. The meeting's now adjourned, thank you, and good night.